Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Walter Eichel, and I would like to open the annual Spring Town Meeting and call it to order. First, I'd like to invite you all to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
Ladies and gentlemen, I would like you all to join me in congratulating our new town moderator, Walter Eichel. And, Mr. Moderator, the annual town meeting is all yours. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I would also like to congratulate Mike Tool, Michael Tool, for his running his selectman race and winning his selectman race last week, so I'd like to give him a round of applause So, I would like to thank you all for making the time and taking the effort to come out to our annual town meeting, so I would like to extend to all of you a communal socially conscious elbow bump. Thank you very much for coming. As this is my first town meeting, I would like to assure you that I will strive to run the meeting to provide you all the best opportunities to participate in town government. I don't claim to be able to replace Bill Guevea. All I can say is, I come after him. Before we begin the meeting, I would like to go over some of the rules of our meeting. Please find a seat. Looks like everyone has. We do have a non-voting section, which is behind the yellow sign over there. So, everyone seated in that portion of the field is considered a non-voter. So, if that is not the case, please move on to the main part of the field. Thank you. Let's see. Okay, so, when you wish to speak and address the meeting, you must first be recognized by the moderator, and you will be handed a microphone. We have workers in the field, and they will bring you a microphone. So, if you wish to address the meeting, please stand up or raise your hand. The moderator will recognize you, and a microphone will be brought to you for that purpose. When you speak, please start by stating your name and address, so the clerk can record that information for the meeting minutes. Please try to keep your remarks brief, to the point, and make sure they are relevant to the article under discussion only. All speakers will be treated with respect and courtesy by the moderator and the other attendees of the meeting. No speaker will be allowed to use the meeting for personal attacks on any individual. All remarks will be directed to the moderator, and while I will allow questions to be asked of individuals, I will not allow cross-examination of speakers. In recognizing people to speak, I will try to call upon those who have not spoken already on the topic before someone wants to speak a second time. I will entertain motions to move the questions, question, but I will reserve my right as moderator to deny any motion to move the question if I think that there is still discussion to be had. If a standing vote or a ballot vote is required, instructions will be presented at that time. If you wish to make an amendment to any motion, you must do it in writing and present it to the moderator and the clerk. Please prepare your written amendment and bring it up here. If you wish to move an article that has not been recommended by the Finance Committee, you must also present that motion in writing to the clerk. I will remind you that no motion to reconsider any article will be accepted by the moderator until at least three articles following that article have been acted on by this meeting. This will not apply if the article is one of the last three of the warrant. So, be aware that any article that you act upon can be reconsidered. So, the Bill Guevea Rule of Reconsideration means that if you came here for, let's say, Article 5, and that article passes, sometime later, someone may move to reconsider the article, discussion and possible voting restarts, and the result may change. So, be aware that the results of voting are not permanent until the meeting closes. There will be a process for non-voters to speak on certain articles, and it is up to the meeting to decide, but I remind you that outside speakers often have important, relevant facts that we need when considering articles. So, consider that when deciding whether to hear outside speakers. And, Mr. Finance Committee Chairman, do I have a motion to allow the non-resident speakers to speak?
So moved.
Thank you. So, I would like to vote to allow the non-resident speakers to potentially address the meeting, and the speakers we have today are the Town Council, Lauren Goldberg, and Water and Sewer Engineer, Stephen Pedersen. So, all in favor of allowing these non-resident speakers to potentially address the meeting, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. All opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. Let's see. We do have some special considerations given the COVID-19 situation. We do ask that you remain seated during the meetings in your places here. If you would like to ask a question, as I said, please stand up, and a microphone will be brought to you. Based on the guidance from the governor, we do ask that you wear a mask and continue to do so throughout the duration of the meeting to help protect one another. If for any reason you need to seek medical attention, the Fire Department is available to your right. To your left, we also have porta-potties that you're welcome to use during the meeting. At the end of the meeting, I would like to ask everyone to remain in your seat, and I will dismiss you by rows. We'd like to have an orderly exit, again, maintaining social distance. So, at the conclusion of the meeting, please stay in your seat, and I will dismiss everybody one row at a time. Thank you for your help on that. I would now like, before we start the warrant, I would like to turn the meeting over to the Chairman of the Finance Committee for a brief announcement.
I'll read the call.
Are you going to do the presentation?
You can.
Bills? No? No?
Or I have something to...
We already did that. We already did that. Sorry.
That's fine. Okay, so, just to bring everybody up to date, the Finance Committee presented the retiring moderator, Mr. Bill Guevea, with a ceremonial gavel. That was done at the Finance Committee meeting, I assume?
It was done about 10 minutes before this began.
Very good. Okay, well, thank you. So, I'm sorry you weren't all able to participate in that. I'm sure it was a moving ceremony. But I would like to give Mr. Guevea a round of applause for his many decades of service to the town.
And he does have a gavel if he needs it.
Okay, great. We are making do with what equipment we have, but thank you, yes. Let's see, another piece of business. Section 2-2 of the Norton Charter allows the moderator to designate a deputy moderator to serve between now and the next spring meeting. The deputy can preside at town meetings when the elected moderator is not available. The appointment of the deputy must be voted on by the members of the town meeting. I would like to nominate Bill Guevea for the position of deputy moderator and put it to a vote at this time. Do I have a motion to make that movement?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. So, all in favor of nominating and appointing Bill Guevea as deputy moderator for the next year between now and the next spring meeting, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Thank you. The motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Deputy Moderator. I do have one other announcement. There are now two open positions on the Norton Finance Committee. If anyone is interested in applying for either of those positions, I invite you to contact me any way you like, but my email, my town email, is W-E-Y-K-E-L@NortonMAUS.com. So, if you're interested in a position on the Finance Committee, please feel free to reach out to me. I will be soliciting applicants for the foreseeable future until they are presented. Having no other business, Madam Clerk, has there been a return on the warrant?
Mr. Moderator, Norton, Massachusetts. I have served this warrant by posting attested copies at the Chartley Post Office, Norton Post Office, Norton Municipal Center, Norton Public Library, and three other public places within the limits of said town, seven days at least before the time of holding said meeting. attest, Michael J. Mayor, Constable, Norton, Massachusetts, on June 18th, 2020.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now proceed to the warrant. As is our custom, the Chairman of the Finance Committee makes the motions for the warrant articles. Article 2.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Chairman.
I move that the town approve Article 2 as printed in the warrant.
Article 2 has been moved as printed in the warrant. Is there any discussion on Article 2? Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion on Article 2? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of Article 2, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article 2 passes unanimously, as declared by the moderator. Thank you, Madam Counsel. Article 3.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Chairman.
I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of $185,735 from free cash to pay all outstanding separation expenses associated with the retirement of various employees from the town of Norton, and to authorize the town accountant, in consultation with the town manager, to allocate amounts to the appropriate departments.
Any discussion on Article 3? Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Need to ask for a second. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Thank you. And discussion? Yes, sir. Somebody could bring a...
How many employees does this involve? Who are they, and how much is each one getting?
I'm sorry, sir. You were cut out just a little bit there. Could you repeat the question?
How many employees are involved? Who are they, and what's the payout for each person?
Mr. Town Manager.
These are, there's four people, or five people involved, excuse me, and this is payout for sick buyback, vacation, and one employee will receive $27,000 in sick leave buyback, another employee $56,000, another employee will receive $18,000 in vacation buyback, another employee receives $17,700 in vacation buyback, another employee will receive $75,850 in sick buyback, and the last employee is $19,450 in sick buyback.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Yes, sir.
The third part of that question was the identity of the employees.
So, we have two in the Fire Department, Andrew Gomes, Paul Schlecker, Police Department, Detective Todd Branwell, who last day of work was yesterday after 33 years, Sergeant Whitfield, and from Communications, Scott Eisner.
Is there any further discussion on Article 3? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of Article 3, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. All those opposed? Article 3 passes unanimously, as determined by the moderator. Thank you. There were two. You're right, yes. Yes, so, Article 3 passes by majority, as determined by the operator, moderator. Thank you. Article 4.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Chairman.
I move that the town vote to approve the cost items for the first fiscal year of the contract between the town of Norton and AFS CME Council 93 Local 1702 Water and Sewer Employees for the period between July 1st, 2020, and June 30th, 2023, with the funding, therefore, to be appropriated in the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds under Articles 6 and 7.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article 4? Yes, sir. Would you please state your name and address for the record as well?
John Freeman, Freeman Street. This article will cause this contract to be accepted by the town, and it will bind the town for the, I believe it's three years, if that's what the contract term is, to fund this every year by one vote today. Notwithstanding the fact that this is not the time for raises, the towns admit that the money situation is very fluid. Certainly, this isn't the time to commit a three-year expenditure. So, I think the smart thing to do, if everyone here could agree to vote no at this time on this, or maybe a better situation would be to table this until things straighten out a little bit. So, not that I don't have faith in my fellow taxpayers, if it's proper, I'd like to make a motion to table this article until the next town meeting, whether it's a special or whether it's a regular one. So, I move to table Article 4.
Do I have a second for that motion to table this article? Do I have any discussion on the new motion? Yes, in the back there.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Luke Grant, 210 North Washington Street, Water and Sewer Chairman. I fully appreciate the spirit of the motion. I will point out that the water sewer budgets are both enterprise accounts, and you can imagine these like a small business. So, the revenues generated by the water invoices and the associated sewer invoices pay those employees for which they haven't had a contract renewed in the past three years. Secondly, we have a lot going on in our town. We recently opened up a very expensive, very complicated water treatment facility. We need to attract the best, most well-trained and competent people we can. Passing this compensation package for our dedicated, intelligent, hard-working, and very well-trained employees continues to provide you with the best services through Water and Sewer that we can provide. In this world of rules and regulations, both Water and Sewer employees have to have certifications most of you cannot imagine. These folks go through years of training, much like a plumber, with apprenticeships and tests and updated training. So, to give these people their due compensation is the minimum we can do to continue to achieve the best levels of service we can. Thank you.
Mr. Freeman.
Yeah, one thing I didn't mention the first time, I have no idea, I have a little idea now, who, whose contracts these are, because it doesn't matter. I think the point I made still stands. It's nothing personal, it's just the physical reality that things aren't good. Reagan said that a rising tide raises all boats. By the same token, an outgoing tide lowers all boats. I don't think public employees, particularly public employee unions, I don't think their boats have gone down. I mean, what are their boats, in the dead seas? I think this is physical and social reality, the way the financial situation is now, particularly in this state. But I would like to clarify, for everyone's benefit, including my own, is this just one contract, or is it several contracts that this would cover? Thank you.
Mr. Town Manager.
This is one three-year contract with the Water and Sewer Department employees. This contract was negotiated in good faith and signed in October, but did not make the October town meeting warrant. That's why it's here today.
So, discussion is not typical on motions to table other motions, but I will entertain another comment if anybody would like to make one. Seeing none, we'll move to the vote on the motion to table Article 4. And this requires a two-thirds vote. So, just to be clear, we're voting on the motion to move Article, to table Article 4, not Article 4 itself. All set? All those in favor of the motion to table Article 4, please signify by raising your All those opposed? Thank you. The motion fails. So, we will now return to Article 4. Is there any additional discussion on that?
Could I ask you to step to a microphone and state your name and address for the record?
My name is John Smith. My name is Bill Guevea. I live on Maple Street. Could we just know what the amounts are, so we know what we're subject? Because as I understand it, town meeting doesn't vote to accept the contract, it only votes to fund or not fund the contract. The obligation is when the officials sign the contracts, and that doesn't need town meeting, you know, the town meeting's approval. But we do, in order to fund it, could we just know, by voting for an article, how much we're talking about, what percentage?
The contract each year for the three years will be 2% a year for three years, and there's no other provisions in the contract other than the three-year timeframe.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Mr. Freeman.
If I've been following along right, my paper says that the Finance Committee recommends that no action be taken. Is that valid, or did I miss something?
The Finance Committee Chairman can correct me from wrong, but they met, I believe you met this morning and had a vote on that.
We were provided with this information either Wednesday or Thursday of this week, met on it at 8:30 this morning. For the record, we're not happy that we get it at the last second, but it is what it is. And we voted in favor.
Recommended?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any additional discussion? Yes, sir.
Steve Hornsby, 66 Pine Street. I just had a question, why wasn't it specified in the article that it was for Water and Sewer? As it's written, it looks like there's collective bargaining agreements, which would mean more than one.
Madam Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, through you. The article is essentially drafted to provide notice that collective bargaining agreements may be addressed at this meeting. It is intentionally broad, as is allowed by law, and the motion is before you on what is actually being acted upon. As you know, the town meeting warrant is signed and approved well before the town meeting is held, and the hope is always to bring as many collective bargaining agreements to fruition before town meeting is held.
Thank you. Yes.
Ralph Sepinelli, 12 James Street. There's a little bit of confusion. Are we voting to give them a 2% raise based on our Finance Committee's recent meeting for the next three years? Is that a yes or a no?
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Counsel.
Thank you. So, the ability of town meeting to act on collective bargaining agreements is solely with respect to funding. If the town funds the article, the agreement in the first fiscal year, then it is binding on the town for the next two years. It does not mean, however, that town meeting must fund the department at the higher rate. If it does not, it can result in layoffs. I'd also just like to point out that the numbers, it's my understanding, for this collective bargaining agreement have been part of the decision-making about the sewer and water enterprise budgets all along. So, again, I think this was just brought before you as a housekeeping measure in order to comply, excuse me, with state law, but it is, it has been discussed, the amounts in this contract have been discussed throughout the budget process.
Thank you.
Since they have not had a raise in a number of years, and it's very difficult to get qualified people in that particular profession to just move from one town to another, putting aside the planned endemic and the fact that we're running out of money, we like to stand within our budget, we're looking at the future. I would not like to see our people in the Water Department say, "I'm out of here." That's a whole new ballgame. I recommend it. Just rethink it. It's a yes or a no. Finance Committee said they did feel favorable toward the three years. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Let's move with the Finance Committee. We've got some qualified people on that committee. Let's move forward, in my opinion, to fund 2% for the next three years on a project that's already in the works, and we want to keep our people, the people, in place. I recommend a yes vote. Thank you.
Before this gets any more confusing, I don't think, maybe I've missed it, I don't think we've heard a number in dollars of what we're voting on, and if, I don't say if Town Council's right, Town Council told us our only authority... if town council's right, town council told us our only authority as a town meeting is the financial end of the contracts, not the sick leave, not the personal days. I, I think that we gotta know, if we're gonna vote on the financial aspects, what the financial aspects are. If it's fifty bucks over three years, it's no problem. But if it's another million dollars, we got a problem. I got a problem. A lot of other people don't, obviously.
Hello, my name is, hello, my name is Jack Doherty, I live in Nine Brick Street. I would like to comment on the motion, the article here today, saying that we are in a unique position as a public institution to provide economic security to our tireless town servants. Our town employees are the backbone of our institution, of our public institutions. We should not be dithering over giving them qualified individuals the pay they deserve. I would like to ask if the collective authority agreement negotiation has concluded.
Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, negotiations concluded in September, and this contract memorandum of agreement was signed the first week of October.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman.
Is it possible to get an answer, or doesn't anyone know what this is gonna cost yet? My question was, how much money are we voting? And another question is, whatever we vote on this article, is that in addition to Article, the big budget article, whatever number it is? Or has that been included in the big budget article? I think that's important. So would like to know how much this contract's costing, and if it's already been taken into account in a sixty million, eight-hundred-and-eighty thousand and change budget. The other thing is, I'd like to remind the last speaker, while those people work for us, we don't want to get into a position that we're all working for them, because with a budget this size, a lot of taxpayers are doing more work for the town than a lot of the employees are doing. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator. Select Board Member.
James Puello, Town Accountant. Just want to clarify that Articles Six and Seven under the lines of Personnel Services include the amounts that will be covered in this agreement. The sixty million dollars that you're referring to is the general fund budget, does not pay for the water and sewer.
Yes, sir.
Steve Bishop, thirty-three Goldenwood Drive. I'd like to move the question, motion to move the question.
Do I have a second on that? All right. Sorry? Let's see. Yes, so we have a motion on the floor to move the question. That motion is non-debatable, so we will go to the vote on moving the Article Four. Moving the question, thank you. And this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of moving the question, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? The motion to move the question passes. Declare, two-thirds vote as declared by the moderator. I apologize, I'm still getting the terminology down. So now we will move to voting on the main article, Article Four. Okay. So we'll now move to the vote. All those in favor of Article Four, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. All those opposed? Article Four passes. Thank you. Article Five.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Chairman.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for tree services, including but not limited to the removal of hazardous trees, stump removal, and performance of additional preventative and emergency services townwide, including crane rentals and other incidental related costs.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article Five? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of Article Five, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article Five passes. Thank you. Article Six.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Chairman.
I move that the total amount of four million, five-hundred-sixty-three thousand, three-hundred-forty-three thou, three-hundred-forty-three dollars be appropriated for the operation of the water enterprise for fiscal year 2021 from water enterprise receipts, including but not limited to user charges, lease revenue, interest, and miscellaneous revenues. In the amount of four million, three-hundred-six thousand, four dollars, and by transferring from retained earnings, the amount of two-hundred-fifty-seven thousand, three-hundred-thirty-nine dollars, four million, one-hundred-seventy-two dollars, six-hundred-twenty-eight of said sum being appropriated hereunder for the direct costs of the enterprise, and three-hundred-ninety-thousand, seven-hundred-fifteen of said sum to be appropriated in the general, in the general fund under Article Eight for indirect costs and allocated to the water enterprise fund as follows. One million, one-hundred-sixteen thousand, five-hundred-ninety dollars for personnel services, one million, two-hundred-eleven thousand, other charges and expenditures, one million, eight-hundred-forty-five thousand, thirty-eight dollars for debt service, three-hundred-ninety, seven-hundred-fifteen dollars for indirect costs, for a total of four million, five-hundred-sixty-three thousand, three-hundred-forty-three dollars.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article Six? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All in favor of Article Six, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. All those opposed? Article Six passes. Article Seven.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Chairman.
I move that the total amount of one million, seven-hundred-sixty-five thousand, eight-hundred-seventy-eight dollars be appropriated for the operation of the sewer enterprise for fiscal year 2021 from sewer enterprise receipts, including but not limited to fees, charges, interest, and miscellaneous revenues, with one million, six-hundred-seventy thousand, eight-hundred-ninety-two of said sum being appropriated hereunder for the direct costs of the enterprise, and ninety-four thousand, nine-hundred-eighty-six dollars of said sum to be appropriated in the general fund under Article Eight for indirect costs and, and allocated to the sewer enterprise fund for funding as follows. Two-hundred-fifty thousand, five-hundred-eighty-one dollars for personnel services, one million, one-hundred-eighty-six thousand, one-hundred dollars for other charges and expenditures, ninety-four thousand, nine-hundred-eighty-six dollars for indirect costs, and two-hundred-thirty-four thousand, two-hundred-eleven dollars for debt service, for a total of one million, seven-hundred-sixty-five thousand, eight-hundred-seventy-eight dollars.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on Article Seven? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of Article Seven, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. All those opposed? Article Seven passes. Article Eight.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Chairman.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the amount of fifty-eight million, four-hundred-thirty thousand, three-hundred-fifty-two dollars raised from water receipts, the amount of three-hundred-ninety thousand, seven-hundred-fifteen dollars, raised from sewer receipts, the amount of ninety-four thousand, nine-hundred-eighty-six dollars. All is presented in the Finance Committee's recommendation as printed in Article Eight of the June twenty-seventh, 2020 annual town meeting warrant, and further, the amount of one million, nine-hundred-two thousand, eight-hundred-twenty dollars to be transferred from the following funds for the total appropriation of fiscal year 2021 operating budget of sixty million, eight-hundred-eighteen thousand, eight-hundred-seventy-three dollars. Hicks Fund, hundred thousand dollars. Ambulance Receipts, seven hundred thousand dollars. Septic Betterments, thirty-five thousand. Dog Fund, ten thousand. Debt Exclusion Premium, fifteen thousand, three-hundred-twenty dollars. Wetlands Protection, three thousand. Stabilization, four-hundred-thirty-nine thousand, five-hundred dollars. Free Cash, six hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article Eight? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. This vote requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of Article Eight, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article Eight passes by a two-thirds majority as determined by the operator, moderator. Article Nine.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Chairman.
I move that the town appropriate the total sum of one million, three-hundred-thousand, one-hundred-sixty-five dollars for the purchase or lease for periods of time up to or in excess of three years with an option to purchase, and equip new and/or replacement capital items for capital projects for various town departments, and for the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto for the purpose, purposes, and in the amount set forth in the Finance Committee's recommendation and in the chart entitled Article Nine Proposed Fiscal Year 21 Capital Budget. And to meet said appropriation, to transfer the amount of four-hundred-sixteen thousand, one-hundred-fifty dollars from the capital improvements account, the amount of thirty-four thousand, fifteen dollars from water enterprise retained earnings, and by authorizing the treasurer with the approval of the select board, and for the items marked borrowing, to borrow the amount of eight-hundred-fifty thousand dollars pursuant to General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Subchapter Seven or Eight, General Law, Chapter Forty-four, General Law, Twenty-nine C, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore, with the understanding that although these will be general obligation bonds of the town, it is anticipated that they will be repaid from water enterprise, and in accordance, and in accordance with General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Subchapter Twenty, authorize any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, to be applied to the payment of costs approved hereunder, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article Nine? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote, and I'll inform everyone this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article Nine, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. All those opposed? Article Nine passes by a two-thirds majority as determined by the moderator. Article Ten.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Chairman.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the amount of one million, one-hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of constructing sewers, pump stations, force mains, and for related legal, administrative, and other pertinent expenses associated with the construction of public sewers required to serve the Woodland Meadows Development, Norton High School, Yale Elementary, and other public and private properties on West Main Street, Taunab, Howard Street, Vilmore Drive, along the sewer alignment needed to serve those properties, including without limitation all costs thereof as defined in General Law, Chapter Twenty-nine C, Subchapter One. That such sum of money to be used to augment the five million, seven-hundred thousand dollar appropriated and approved for the borrowing under previous town meeting articles, and to further, and further to authorize the funds appropriated under previous articles to also be expended for the purposes set forth herein, that to meet this additional appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow the amount of one million, one-hundred thousand dollars, and to issue bonds or notes, therefore, in accordance with General Law, Chapter Forty-four, General Law, Chapter Twenty-nine C, or any other enabling authority. That such bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the town unless treasurer with the approval of the selectmen determines that they should be issued as limited obligations, and may be secured by local systems, system revenues as defined in General Law, Chapter Twenty-nine C, Subchapter One. That the Norton Water and Sewer Commission be and is authorized to apply for, accept, and expend any state and/or federal grants and loans or other public or private funds that may be available for the project, and that the Water and Sewer Commission be authorized to assess sewer betterments and/or privileged fees to recover all or a portion of the sewer project costs authorized by this vote, Article Eight of the May eighth, 2017 special town meeting, Article Eight of the May fourteenth, 2018 special town meeting, and Article Thirteen of the May fifteenth, 2019 town meeting, in accordance with any of the methods available under General Law, Chapter Eighty and Chapter Eighty-three. And Town Sewer Department Rules and Regulations, that the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from Massachusetts Clean Water Trust established pursuant to, to said Chapter Twenty-nine C, and in connection therewith to enter into a loan agreement and/or security agreement with the trust and otherwise to contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan and for any federal or state aid available for the project or the financing thereof, that the Board of Water and Sewer Commission is, is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expend all funds available for the project, and to authorize the select board and/or Water and Sewer Commission to acquire by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain the fee to and/or permanent and temporary easements in, on, and under the foregoing properties as may be necessary or convenient for the purposes set forth herein, and in accordance with General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Subchapter Twenty, authorize any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes. of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of the project costs approved herein, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount of authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs. After all that is said, we are looking for a million, an additional one million, one hundred thousand dollars for a what is currently five point seven million dollar project. It's all yours.
Thank you, and well done. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article ten? Mr. Freeman.
Want to keep this short. Very understandable, so bear with me. Currently building a sewer project on West Main Street. Correct me if I say something wrong, anybody. Bid was open. Came in at five point seven million. That's what we've bonded probably, appropriated, whatever. Now, seems the contractor, or whoever, maybe the Water and Sewer Department, undoubtedly the contractor, has requested another one million, one hundred thousand dollars to cover. And this is the handout that I think everybody got to cover. Additional rock beyond estimated quantity. Number one, who estimated the quantity? Why was it wrong? If the town estimated and the contractor accepted their estimate, they based their bid on it, the problem is with the bid, not the town. If they had somebody estimate it, working for the contractor that was about to bid, it's still not the town's responsibility. I mean, the contracts usually, from my experience, and I'm not an expert, if they don't know if there's ledge or not, they usually bid subject to additional charge for lead. And I believe they usually bid it at so much a yard. They break the ledge, load it in a truck, measure it as it goes out, and the contract pays the difference. That's understood by both parties. Want to know why this wasn't done? I really don't care if it wasn't done because it's on the contractor. It's only good business for him to cover contingencies. I don't see why the town has to be responsible for what you'd probably call his mistakes. The second thing is uncharted utilities. Does the town not know what utilities are in their road? I can understand if it was a wooden water main that was abandoned in nineteen-ten. They wouldn't know it probably. It's just a wooden pipe in the ground. And I don't think that's going to cost very much to go right through. Just rip it out and keep going. But do we not have our utilities chatted in this town? And if they're town utilities, why not? But if they're public utilities, I guess the same question applies. Why not? I mean, you could probably get, I don't know if you could, but get DigSafe out to locate them. They have a they have a pretty good handle on what's underground. Let me just say that. Now, the other thing is reduced production. That's totally in the hands of the contractor. If its machines aren't big enough, he's got to put up with less production and more, you know, let's say laborer pay or truck waiting time, okay? If he wants increased production, he buys a bigger machine, it would seem. That's totally on him, reduce production. Now, there's three things. It causes additional police details and construction oversight costs. That's figured by the hour. I don't know how to do it, but, I mean, I would say that who's overs, who's, who's, who's the construction oversight? Is that a town employee or somebody we hired? If it was an engineer we hired to do it, you give him a flat fee for the whole job. You know, you don't give him four hours if he leaves at quarter past quitting time, you know? And the police details are something that probably the town has some control over. And I don't know if that was in the original bid or if that was something that could have been appropriated separately and have the police chief keep that under control. Now, I know I know expended today, three and a half million, da-da-da, all that. You know, that's like hiring an expert. I'm sick of experts because they usually get things wrong. That's like hiring an expert for two hundred thousand dollars to study something. And the answer is, we need a twenty million dollar this or that. And the town's response is, oh, well, we've already spent two hundred thousand. We gotta spend the twenty million. I say, if this guy doesn't finish it for what he bid on, if what I say is accurate, I'm only going from logic, my logic, maybe it's wrong. If they bid five point seven and they could have checked on the ledge and the rock, and they could have taken into consideration uncharted utilities, and they didn't have the equipment for fast production, it's on them. I mean, we're already into this. Basically, it's a project we didn't need. Probably Wheaton needed it. The elderly housing maybe needed it. But there were other solutions to that, but we gotta go. We got delusions of grandeur. But I say, we keep one point one million, we might find a better use for it. Tell the contractor he's got to finish it or break the contract, and I imagine there's a performance bond in place. Has town council looked into this at all? Or we just, did we just decide we're going to roll over and throw another million one at them? Maybe town council could answer that question. I guess that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. First, I'd like to recognize Mr. Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Freeman, you've made some valid points. If I may, in the beginning of the meeting, the moderator asked for a vote to listen to outside experts. I have Mr. Steve Peterson from Weston and Sampson, who's prepared a very short, I guarantee you, presentation which will address many of the important topics Mr. Freeman brought up. If you could indulge us just for a moment, and then both Mr. Peterson and I will respond to any remaining questions. Mr. Moderator, may I introduce Mr. Steve Peterson from Weston and Sampson? Under these conditions, I'm not sure where Mr. Peterson should speak from.
The moderator recognizes Mr. Peterson. Could you come to the microphone right up here, please? You can come to the podium if you like, or use the one on the field. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Luke. So, good morning. I'm sure you're just as disappointed to see us again as we are to be here. Unfortunately, the challenges and associated costs on the West Main Street sewer project have continued to mount. When we were here last year, bids for the project had been opened and based primarily on the rising cost of construction. We had requested and received an increase in the appropriation at that time to bring the authorization to five point seven million. So, as you're aware, today we are asking for an increase of one point one million, which would bring the total authorization to six point eight million, and provide sufficient funding to complete this critical town infrastructure project. So, since the start of construction, we've encountered numerous uncharted utilities, both on the campus of Wheaton College, which was very challenging. I guess that question has already, you know, been asked about the uncharted utilities. In Wheaton, they were just, they're inundated with stuff that they're just not sure where it is. So, there were a lot of challenges there. And then in the state highway layout, it's a lot of the state stuff. The state drains aren't where they're, aren't where they're supposed to be. We've got Verizon and Comcast lines that we're running into that they didn't even know they had. Some of them are abandoned, but until we figure out that they're abandoned, we have to deal with them. Some of them are alive. So, that's kind of the uncharted utilities. We knew there were a lot of utilities out there. We had a bunch of utilities mapped, and there's just more. And it's just, it's a busy area coming through. We're one forty and one twenty-three intersect. There's a lot going on there. So, and we've also encountered additional rock beyond the estimated quantity. You know, to that, I guess, earlier discussion, you know, the rock is paid per cubic yard. So, the contractor is getting paid. He gave us a price per yard. So, he is being paid per yard for the rock, based on his contract. So, that number is increasing. So, in addition to the additional construction costs, the impact on production was alluded to. So, this is more about the longer construction timeframes and the overall other costs associated with that. That's not, the contractor's cost, that's, you know, the longer we're out there, the more the costs mount for police details and other oversight type costs. And in a job like this, where we are, that's not an insignificant thing. We've got three, four, five traffic officers out there at all times because obviously, safety is paramount, and there's a lot going on out there. So, as construction gets delayed, those costs escalate also. So, today, we've incurred costs totaling about three point five million, which includes construction of the pump station at the Woodland Meadows complex, which is about eighty-five percent complete at this point. We've installed three thousand feet of gravity sewer, which is about forty-six percent of the quantity in the contract. And so far, the sewer we've installed is from the existing pump station at Wheaton College along Vilmore Drive and Howard Street out to Taunton Ave. We've come through the intersection of one forty and one twenty-three, which, from a traffic perspective, was one of the most challenging parts of the job. And now, we're continuing on West Main Street. And at this point, we're just past Fernandez Circle. And at this current location, we're definitely at the deepest and most challenging part of the project with an excavation depth down about sixteen feet and ledges being counted just below the paved surface. We knew the ledge was there. We knew there was rock. But it definitely, you know, we didn't excavate the whole trench until you, you know, linear underground utility projects, until you actually open it up. You know, foot by foot, it can change. And then that's what's going on right here. So, they're dealing, construction is obviously in progress, have been very slow through this area. If you drive that area, you may have noticed that the contractor hasn't gone very far recently. So, assuming these current conditions continue to some level over the remaining thirty-five hundred feet, we've got about thirty-five hundred feet left to go from where we are now up to the Woodland Meadows complex at one twenty West Main Street. The estimated amount to complete is about three point three million, and that's what brings the total estimate to six point eight million. So, of that additional one point one that we're asking for today, about fifty percent of that is attributed to construction costs for the changed conditions, the additional rock that's being pulled out, the additional efforts to deal with the uncharted utilities and fix those when they're damaged. And the other fifty percent is really related to the production resulting from the supporting efforts, primarily the police detail costs. I guess regardless of the rising costs, the need for and benefits of the project remain. I know we've talked about this at previous town meetings. This project represents phase two of the town's comprehensive wastewater management plan, provides sewer service to identified needs areas along Route one twenty-three, and it also sets the foundation for future expansion of the sewer along West Main Street and around the remainder of the reservoir, which are the areas that have been identified as need. Now, the Department of Housing and Community Development and the Norton Housing Authority have parted with the town, as I'm sure you're all aware. They've contributed about one point eight million towards this project in lieu of constructing a wastewater treatment facility on their property. The Norton School Department is anxious for a wastewater solution that will provide an immediate service to the high school and Yale School, which this will do, and will ultimately give them the ability to eliminate the wastewater treatment facility at the middle school and get out of the wastewater business altogether. They're very anxious to not, not be in the wastewater business. So, just looking ahead in terms of, if we don't have the funding to finish the project, if we don't complete it, it would obviously cost the town significant money on what's been spent with nothing to show for the efforts to date. You know, we've already received about seven hundred and sixty thousand from the Housing Authority, and there's another million to go. If we stop the project, we would need to return that money, and we would never realize the other money that the Housing Authority is contributing. And that's a, that's a big part of the, the reason this moved forward was the funding support from that entity. We've already incurred or borrowed money from the SRF, about two point nine million. That still needs to be paid back regardless of whether we finish the project. Obviously, the Norton schools would need to go back to the drawing board in terms of dealing with the treatment plant at the middle school. They would certainly need to make upgrades to that plant to satisfy their wastewater needs. There would be contract termination settlement costs if we weren't able to complete with the contractor, and future extensions under the comp plan would not be possible. And, you know, understanding the realization that at some point, this project does need to be built, there would be future project resurrection costs. It's not going to get cheaper down the road. So, I guess that's my, that's my background. Hopefully, that helps. That's a lot of the information in your bulleted list, hopefully explained a little bit. And once again, we ask that you approve this article so that we can complete this important town infrastructure project.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mr. Gaviria.
Mr. Moderator. Since we just, an article or two ago, passed sixty million dollars without so much a question, I feel kind of funny picking on a lousy million dollars. But I'll do it anyway. This is not the first time that we've come back with this, this project for cost overruns. And with all due respect to the gentleman, I will correct him. No, sir, you are not anywhere near as disappointed to be back before us as we are to have you just, you know, back before us again to have to do this. This is rather outrageous. And what I'm concerned of, look, we're in for a penny, in for a pound at this point. We have no choice but to do this. But this particular thing alone, this one point one million represents over a twenty percent increase, plus the other increases that we've had. So, it brings to question, has this project been properly managed? And by any objective standard, it has not. And that worries me very, very much. And I don't know whose fault it is. I don't care. I just want to make sure that in the future, it's not repeated. As far as I can tell, this is an open pocketbook for anyone to come in and say, we need more money, you're going to have to do it, and they know we have to do it. This should have been planned better in the beginning. I don't know if this is just under the jurisdiction of the water commissioners, the water sewer commissioners, and with all due respect to them. I want to know, who oversees this project? Who oversaw the construction of the bidding and the contract? Why weren't more protections put into the contract to prevent us from doing that? And how are we going to prevent this from happening again? This is disgraceful. It is inexcusable. And there is no way that the citizens of the town Norton should put up with this without having someone tell them how it's being corrected and not going to happen again. And it's so much fun to have an opinion at a town meeting again.
Yes, John Freeman. I can't add too much to that. I would be interested in knowing how much the first cost override was. Does anyone know roughly? One and a half million, somebody said?
So, at, so last.
Is that correct? Close?
Yeah.
Point five million?
One, one point five million was one. 1, 1.5 million was one, an 800-something, another time.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Let's, let's keep the discussion through the moderator, please. Would you like to present your question?
Yeah, well, that was a clarification. So this isn't the first override. We're into it for over 3 million override?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, plus the 5.7. And you said, correct? And you, and you said that the ledge is being charged by the ad. Was that a price you people negotiated with them? Or was that the price he put in the bid? Or like I suspected, maybe I'm wrong, he didn't make a contingency in the bid for ledge? And if it wasn't in the bid, it's on him. Contractor, I should say.
Mr. Peterson, if I, if I may.
Yes.
Can you clarify that?
Uh, well, before you, you move on, um...
I'm sorry.
Mr. Grant, would you like to respond to any of that before we move on?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, it's difficult for those of us on this side to answer multiple questions. So you have good points, Mr. Freeman. I'm going to back up just a little bit. Um, what we do when we put these projects out to bid is, um, do so much feat of construction, so many manholes, so many lift stations. This is standard sewer work. We, as a community, and I speak with many members of our community, looked at me and said, "Oh, there's, there's some rock in that area." Um, going back to, to former highway employees, all the people I know, which are many, and they have experience in the ground, as I am an excavation contractor, I listen to these people. So during the cost estimating of this very expensive project, we did borings through the period of 300 feet along the 6,000 feet of the project. And I understand all your frustration. And, Mr. Gavilla, I am super frustrated. Maybe not as much as you, but levels of frustration, we can't compare. It would be prohibitively expensive to put a drill crew and police officers and patch-up crews to drill every 50 feet, which our commission has both explained to the selectmen, the FinCon, and now you fine people, that number one, we have extensive unknown significant in-use utilities. Some of the duct banks that supply those lights at 123 and 140, we'll put them in the, in 1950s, 1960s. Nobody charred them. We don't know where they are. So if you, if you step into our shoes for a minute and you take a two-inch core drill and you drill through a live electric line supporting the streetlights, you either shock the drill operator, out the lights, or somehow take another step backwards. So one of them is how we estimate the blasted approximate ledge quantity of going every 300 feet along the 6,000, and you don't even really drill through the ledge. You get to it, you see the number of blows per foot that you achieve, and you either determine it's boulders or ledge. These are not, um, dogs thrown at a board on a drunken Friday night. These folks have experience in rock, but we were wrong. There's no way to sugarcoat it, we were wrong. And as somebody just alluded to, I think it was Mr. Gavilla, the project has to continue. Um, none of us are happy, um, none of us. But what I will say is, going forward, places like the vacant lot where the bank was demolished and has sat empty, don't generate tax revenue. It doesn't, it doesn't make our center of our community a nice place to drive through or to frequent once this foolish pandemic goes away. So I implore you, support the Woodland Metals wastewater needs. Support high school that we're sitting in because the affluent flowing from here, we, uh, as a town, are in DEP orders to get our middle school wastewater treatment plant in line because it was not designed for any other buildings than that middle school. Currently, it's taking the Yale waste and this high school waste, and it's not meeting its numbers. The sewer pipe that we're installing to the Woodland Metals handles many problems. It has gotten much more expensive, but please understand, this is a giant leap forward for our community, and we need this. We need this as much as we need the air right now. Thank you.
Mr. Stefanelli.
12 James Street, Ralph Stefanelli. I want to thank Bill for seconding my thoughts about the ability to come to the microphone through town meeting and speak your mind. Thank you for that, fortificating, possibly changing the way we do business here in town. I don't want to give my voice to nine or 12 people. Taunton gave us Norton 300 years ago. They knew what they were doing. This is a swamp where I'm standing. When it rains, there's no games. And it goes all the way. And right down there at the end of that tree line is Wheaton College. And the reason that they built their waste treatment plant is because they couldn't afford to join with our waste treatment plant. We didn't have the capacity. So what did we do? We created a tri-town water commission that included Foxborough, Mansfield, and Norton, and we expanded our waste treatment plant. School across the street was un, or underutilized. The town needs money. So let's look at this from 32,000 feet. You've got a lot of land in Norton. It's not accessible. You need sewerage. Can anybody beyond God tell me that when you put the shovel in the ground at there 16 feet of sledge? You got to take it piece by piece. When this page that was handed to you coming into the meeting, it, it outlined why. I'm not up here to fight with you. Project appropriations, additional rock beyond estimated quantity. Ride by the new, um, student facility that they purchased, that they built on Plain Street. There's a giant rock. It's as big as that house up there. It's all ledge. 123, you're standing on ledge. 1972, when I moved here, the zoning laws were a hand grenade. Pull the pin, build anywhere you want. You're going to have a septic system.
Excuse me, Mr. Stefanelli.
I'm talking about the approval of the 1.1 million. It's easier said, excuse me, didn't mean to overtalk you, but did you have a point that you wanted to make?
Uh, we do have other people that would like to speak as well, so if you could finish your, your...
As we're, okay, will do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Take the time to read why it's necessary to make Norton move forward. There are projects on the paper where they wanted to have a sports complex. It's not going to happen on a wet, swampy field. You need that project. 1.1 million, hey, it's a drop in the bucket. The revenue that that will produce is through the roof in our favor as property taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. My care, please.
Hi, Laura Parker, Allen Drive. Uh, first I want to specify that I am fully in favor of this sewer project. I think it's very important, uh, in order to bring more commerce into this town. It is a very important project. That is not what I'm arguing right now. My issue is with the fact that we have hired a professional engineer to come up with estimates so that we can come to town meeting and appropriate those funds. And for two years in a row, we've had to come back and ask for additional funds for miscalculations. I would like to know how much additional money Weston and Sampson has made from this project taking longer than planned. Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson, do you have, uh, information on that?
I mean, I, our contract currently hasn't increased from what we signed on for. So we, we haven't made any, any more money at this point. You know, obviously, if the construction, um, continues and oversight is required, go ahead, Luke. And so at this point, not bad.
Mr. Moderator, if I may, I have one more follow-up question?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I would just like to know who's looking out for Norton's interest when the engineer is misestimating costs and timelines? And what recourse we have to that engineering firm to recoup, recoup some of the cost of that? Thank you.
Uh, okay. Can I, uh, ask Mr. Hornsby to make his point? And then, Mr. Grant, you can respond to both questions.
Mr. Grant can respond.
Um, I'm, I'd like to try to combine those two, so if you could make your point, please.
Okay. Um, I'm just concerned that this is the second time, the second year in a row. Um, project, as Mr. Gavilla said, is over 20%. Um, looking at the two increases, we're looking at almost 30%. And I manage projects professionally, and any project that comes in 20% over is, there's a major problem, whether it's with the contractor or the contract itself. But, um, when is the well dry? Are you going to come back next year for another 1.1, 1.5, two? We all understand, a, and she had said before, that we're all in favor of this project. Uh, I think it's a great thing for the town. But, um, a, at some point, they got us handcuffed here, and they're just going to keep asking for more money, and I'm not okay with that.
Mr. Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, I'm remembering back to, uh, question number one from a moment ago. Um, Weston and Sampson, um, has a person on the site daily. So as construction slows, much like the police details, the construction oversight grows. They haven't hit that yet, as Mr. Peterson said, because we're still in our projected work period or duration. We anticipate, because of the additional rock we've encountered and the lack of production, Weston and Sampson's oversight, as would any other engineer, is going to continue into next spring, when they finish the main lines. We have discussed with the contractor to add another crew and maybe work from the lift station back in lower, um, pipe. The pipe at that point is only, um, seven or eight feet deep, skirting a bunch of the harder rock, boulders and/or ledge we encounter at the 16-foot position. So answer number one is Weston and Sampson will get the time to review the installation of the pipe, which we drastically need. I'm not going to have people setting manholes 16 feet in the ground and having a contractor or, um, somebody walking by saying, "Yeah, that looks good." I want the engineer to say, "That hole is deep enough. There's crushed stone under the manhole. There's stone under the pipe. That pipe is coherent. It's not cracked." These things are going to be buried for 100 or more years without any maintenance. It's gravity sewer, folks. Um, this is a very long-term project. I understand, like I said before, it's expensive, but you need the competent engineers on site to oversee the work that's going in the ground as much as you do the safety offices to provide safety to the community. Going forward, we could hire a peer professional to review Weston and Sampson's initial bid, secondary bid, or our work today. But again, I, I emphasize that all those other professionals would say as well, "I'd like to do 100-foot borings. I'd like to do 100-foot borings down to 10 feet," which may cost us $75,000, just throwing a dot at a wall, a drill rig, a couple of cops, that's all good. I like the $75,000 going into the ground. Pay the contractor some money, get the rock out of the way, bury the pipe, and get the sewer pipe down to Woodland Meadows, so our folks can, actually buy real estate is what we're doing out there. Um, they don't have to have an on-site wastewater plant. That's going to go into the sewer, and if Woodland Metals wants to expand later, for those of us who age in place, we can have an extra apartment or two down there because they don't have a giant septic system, wastewater treatment plant on their property. There's no giant room for a giant wastewater plant over here at our nice high school, which we won't need because the sewers are in. Thank you.
Yes, sir, at the back corner.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, I'd like to echo the, uh, comments from earlier from Mr. Gavilla.
I'm sorry, could you state your name and address for the record?
Uh, my name is Jack Doretti from Nine Brick Street. Uh, I'd like to echo Mr. Gavilla's comments, the last speaker's comments. We're all in favor of this project, but as Mr. Gavilla said, we have to finish this project. Um, I think the best recourse for this town is to no longer do business with Centurion Firm in the future. Uh, I'd like to motion to move the question.
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, you're not allowed to move the question after making your point. So I'm going to have to move on to the next speaker. Uh, this woman over here.
Dino, Dino O'Brien, 6 Avery Road. I'm not here to argue the ins and outs of municipal sewer construction. What we're here to do is amend an existing contract and extend it by a million dollars. I would like to know what is, what amendments have been done to the contract to ensure that this 1 million is the last time that we are coming here? What percentage of it is contingency fee that could be used when something else is encountered? And what recourse the town of Norton has against the contractor or anyone else who fails to live up to this amended contract?
Mr. Peterson, would you like me to have Mr. Grant respond?
No, I can, um, I can, uh, take a stab at that. So in terms of where we're at now, we obviously, every time we come, we have more information. We have a lot more information than we have before. This is, coming back to you this time is the first time we've come back since we've actually been under construction and seen what's in the road. So the current estimates to complete are, are based on what we're actually seeing and an assumption that the, the same conditions are going to continue, uh, into these other areas. So that conservatism has been built into this. Um, there's also a 10% contingency on top of the, um, estimate to complete. So I don't know if that answered all the questions, but... Well, the question was asked earlier, I mean, we do, um, we do currently have legal counsel involved in some discussions with the contractor, um, which we can't really go into here. But, so there are recourse to make sure we get the job done for the money that we're asking for.
Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, Jack Conway on Oak, Oak Street. Um, just two points of clarification. Uh, the initial bid for this project, I believe, was 3.2 million, uh, with 1.7 being contributed by the Norton Housing Authority. With this proposed change, that's now 6.8. So just to give everybody the, the context of the numbers there. And then, uh, through you, Mr. Moderator, to Mr. Peterson, I understand that you said that, to date, Weston and Sampson has not recouped any additional fees. Uh, how much of the 1.1 million is going to Weston Sampson for additional service fees? Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Peterson, then I will, uh, recognize the gentleman over there. Yes, go ahead.
So in the 1.1 million, then, based on the production assumptions, there's an assumption, um, of an increase in our contract of 150,000. So that's how much is in the, the 1.1 million for additional oversight beyond the contract timeframe.
Thank you. Sorry about the wait, sir. Yes, you're next.
Jeff Luciano, 6 Buddhist Drive. Uh, who owns the contract today? Who is liable for the overruns? Uh, Mr., I forget your name, but you identified in this new contract that you have the language to hold the contractor or subcontractor liable. So why wasn't that done with the last 1.7 million dollars that were added to the contract?
No, we, uh, we don't have, it's not a new contract. I mean, it's still, the contract with the contractor is still the same, and they're under the same conditions they were. There are clauses in the contract, um, about the contractor's performance, and we are, you know, we have the ability to review those, and we'll do that. But, so the, the contract hasn't changed. The dollar value has.
Mr. Moderator, through you, so if the contract value is the only thing changing, why can't we hold them to the language that was in the existing contract and have them finish the job at the budget they originally posed?
Because in the, so their contract is all unit prices. So they didn't just give us a lump sum. So it's, everything is based on the quantities of all... So it's, everything is based on the quantities of all the items. So if the quantities vary from their bid, they get paid, you know, the biggest thing being the rock. They get paid for every yard of rock.
Mr. Moderator, so who owns the contract with the engineering firm?
If I, if I may, I'd like to move on to the next speaker. If you could, if you could hold that question. We have a couple of the speakers that have been waiting, so I'd like to get to everybody. Yes, sir, you.
Jim Riley, 49 West Main Street. So my question is, and I'm glad it was brought up, about the 3.4 million in the original contract. If this is basically double at this point, at the time when we were deciding, should we stay with the septic or go to sewer, we looked at a cost benefit, and it looked like sewer would win out. At this point, it looks like that's not the case. So the point that I'd like to make is, I think this kind of puts in jeopardy our phased sewer down to the middle school, down to Salmane's. So the only thing I would request of the finance committee is, when we look at the next phase, can we go back and just take a look at the cost benefit with sewer versus septic? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Moderator?
Uh, yes.
Just to answer that, we did ask that question and got no response. And, and just to put this in perspective, this was not a unanimous in favor vote by the finance committee. There was a lot of back and forth, as Mr. Grant will attest, as to the merits of this additional money.
Mr. Hornsby, did you yield your position? Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, this is for town council. If we have the engineering firm under contract, and they subcontracted to this vendor, how are we liable and not the engineering firm, and why, what are our recourse if we can go after, terminate for cause, which we're there, and force them to recompete or pay for our, recompete out for another vendor?
Town council has advised me that we do not discuss or we do not comment on ongoing issues, and that investigation into that exact question is ongoing at this point. Thank you.
You noted that there was a 10% contingency added to this 1.1. Was there a contingency on the, the original contract?
Mr. Peterson?
Through the moderator, sir.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes, there was, there was a contingency.
Can I ask what that was?
It was 10%.
Okay. So you went through the 10%, increased it another 30%, and now adding another 10%. This is, this is a debacle here. This is ridiculous.
Any, yes, sir.
Keith Silver, 120 Plain Street. I'd like to move the question.
Thank you. I have a second on the motion to move the question.
Someone who has, someone who has some good information has just shut down?
I'm sorry, sir, there's a motion on the floor to move the question.
You didn't have to accept it.
I have accepted it, and it's, it's been seconded, and I have accepted it. So we're gonna vote on this?
If you cancel the program, you owe the state 1.7 million.
Thank you.
You'll have to pay them back.
So we have a motion to move the question. A yes vote will end discussion on Article 10, and we'll move to the vote immediately. A no vote will reopen discussion on Article 10. All those in favor of moving the question, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? The motion passes by a two-thirds majority, as determined by the moderator. Thank you. We'll now move to the vote on the main article, Article 10. This also requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of Article 10, please signify by raising your hands. All those opposed? Motion passes by a two-thirds majority, as determined by the moderator. Article 11.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Chairman?
I move that the town vote to authorize the select board and the Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners to enter into one or more leases having terms of no more than 20 years at a time for telecommunications purposes. The antenna mounting locations on the Cottage Street water tank and portions of land at the base of said tank situated on the town-owned property located at Cottage Street and shown as Assessors Map 21, Lot 102. And further, to authorize the Select Board and the Water and Sewer Commission to grant such access, utility, and other easements on said property as may be necessary or convenient for the purpose of serving the telecommunications equipment thereon, all under such terms and conditions, and for such consideration, which may be nominal consideration, as the Select Board and Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners deem appropriate.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, and a discussion on Article 11. Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of Article 11, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. All those opposed? Article 11 passes. Thank you. Article 12.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Chairman?
I move that the town vote to pay the following unpaid bills incurred in a prior fiscal year using existing fiscal year 2020 funds from account number 001-175-570. Vendor is The Sun Chronicle. It was for advertising, and it is in the amount of $605.30.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
This article requires a four-fifths vote, so I would like to try to make it unanimous to ensure that we've got a proper count. Failing that, we will move to a ballot count. Any discussion on Article 12? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of Article 12, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Okay, I would like to hold a second vote, same conditions, just to make sure, again, the goal is a unanimous vote to ensure that we've got the four-fifths margin. All those in favor of Article 12, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Okay, we're going to have to hold a ballot, a standing count. If I could ask the, so, for a standing count, when you're directed, please stand to signify your yes or no vote, and remain standing until indicated by the town clerk that the count is complete. Okay. Oh, I see. Yes, okay, gotcha. All those in favor, please signify by raising your voting card. Oh, yeah. We missed it. Yeah, she kinda jumped in. Yes. Thank you. Uh, motion 11, Article 11 passes by-
12.
I'm sorry, Article 12 passes by four-fifth margin, as determined by the moderator and the standing count. By 112 votes in favor, one against. Article 13.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Chairman?
I move that the town vote to take Articles 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17, all proposing zoning bylaw amendments together in one vote, and further to refer such articles back to the planning board for further study.
I have a second. Okay. Do we have any discussion on Article 13?
13 to 17.
13 to 17. The intention of this is to handle all those articles in one vote, as they are all intended to be handled in the same way, returning to the planning board for further study. Any discussion on Article 13? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article 13 passes. Thank you.
13 through 17 were referred to committee. Thank you.
Is there any more business to be, to come before the meeting? Seeing none, I, I close the Springtown meeting. Thank you very much.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to close the meeting in, has been seconded. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Thank you. A motion to close passes.